Good evening and welcome to this December 2nd meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. This is like the best part. Madam City Clerk, will you please do roll call?
Councilmember DeForest?
Here.
Councilmember Stone. Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem LaBelle?
Here.
Mayor Warren?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Stone.
Thank you very much. We are—Madam City Clerk, would you please go over the closed session agenda and if there are any public comments, please?
Madam Mayor, seeing no public comments, the City Council will meet—we will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.92 because there is a significant exposure to litigation in one case.
She can't even see her.
Okay. I know. Thank you. With that, we're going to go into recess into closed session. We will reconvene at 6:00 PM for our regular meeting. Good evening, everyone. There's plenty of seats for everybody, I see. Welcome. This is the December 2nd regular meeting of the Marietta City Council. I am now calling to order. Much better. Madam City Attorney, would you please provide a report for closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The City Council met in closed session on one item to confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. The City Council was updated and asked questions. Direction was given, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, will you do a roll call for me?
Councilmember DeForest?
Here.
Councilmember Stone?
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem LaBelle?
Here.
Mayor Warren?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present. And if I may, Madam City Attorney, was Councilmember Stone present in closed session?
Yes, all members are present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, if you are able, I'd ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by our city—one of our city clerk staff members, Kimberly—and remain standing for the infraction led by Councilmember Holliday.
Please place the flag and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you that we live in a place where we can come together and make decisions that affect the whole city and represent the city well. We ask that you instill your will into our hearts and minds tonight and keep everybody safe through the holiday season. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kimberly. Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. At this time, we're looking for the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda? I have a motion by Councilmember DeForest and a second by Councilmember Holliday.
Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask our City Manager for an administrative update.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, we have a handful of things to cover this evening. Get our slides show up. And first, on Friday, December 5th, MAD, which stands for Mothers Against Drunk Driving, will hold its fourth annual Illuminate MAD California event. This initiative honors victims of drunk and drug driving by lighting landmarks across the state in red. And to show our support, the City of Marietta will illuminate City Hall in red. Next, want to highlight something some of you may know, but maybe not everyone. There's a lot of things that make the team here at the City of Marietta special. One of those is our Happiness Committee. So we have a group of dedicated team members who come together to figure out ways that we can celebrate, bond, and improve kind of teamwork and camaraderie. They do a lot of really great things for our team to keep morale up and keep us lighthearted. And in this case, they've done some other really special things that they're going to come up and talk about. First, I do want to introduce—we have in the back row there a number of—the actually, I think the entire Happiness Committee has made it tonight—Jackie Ariano, Diane Huckins, Kristen Schwarzkopf, Evan Crockett, Stephanie Lawson, and Jolene Vert. Again, they're usually helping us put on these fun events. In this case, they decided to dedicate one of those special events to a very special recipient. So I'd like to invite Jackie to come up, who's going to tell us a little bit, and Jolene to—the whole crew, come on up.
Sure.
And Jackie's going to talk to you about one of their latest endeavors.
Jackie Arlano, Management Analyst for Administrative Services. But this evening, I'm here representing the Happiness Committee. As we prepared for our second annual silent auction, the committee unanimously decided that all proceeds should go to the Library Foundation. On November 19th, we held the event and not only met our goal of $3,000, we exceeded it. The Happiness Committee is proud and honored to present to the Marietta Library Foundation President, Kevin Coons—if he can join us—a check for $3,096 for the Marietta Library Expansion Project.
So, just to be clear, instead of taking the time to plan an event where we would maybe play bingo during our lunch break or something else, they decided to ask team members to donate items to a silent auction—which they happily did—so that some of those same employees could come and bid on some of those donated items—which they happily did—all to support another internal cause. Our team really is extraordinary in a lot of ways, and one of the best is the big heart. Do lots of other things. We adopt families during the Christmas season to give gifts and really year-round are working in the same spirit of service that drives us to work for a city. So I just think it's really excellent the work that they do. And on top of that, really, they help to keep things here at the city happy. Okay. Moving on, just to make sure everybody's aware, of course, Christmas is right around the corner. So Marietta City Hall will be closed December 24th through January 1st—that's the week encompassing Christmas and the New Year's holiday. And we will reopen on January 2nd. As always, please remember that we would like to stay connected, and you can stay connected with us at mariettacay.gov/connect. And have a couple more updates, and would like to invite Brian Crawford, our Municipal Services Director, to come up and give an update on CIP projects. He will be followed by Victor Patino, our Recreation Supervisor, who will talk to you a little bit about the last season's aquatics program.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Brian Crawford. I'm Municipal Services Director. And probably the best part of my job is being able to come up to you and report back on projects that we've completed and where we're able to provide some great amenities to the residents of Marietta. So I want to talk to you about a couple of the different projects we've recently committed or completed. We are going to commit to some other projects as well. We have the Los Alamos Hills Sports Park EV stations. So this is located on the west side of the park, near the snack bar. It's nine Level 2 chargers that are on the ChargePoint network. So users will need the ChargePoint app to access. And like all other city-owned EV charging stations, the current rate is 22 cents a kilowatt hour. So this was done through a partnership with SCE and their Charge Ready program. So this has been a couple years in the making. They had a lot of demand from a lot of public agencies to—in this program. And what it did was SCE, through ratepayer funds, they are able to go and do—pay for the design work and also the construction of the entire EV charging station infrastructure. So they do also the meter side—the SCE meter side and also the customer side. So they do all of that design work. They run it through Plan Check here with the city, and then they also pay for all of the construction. All the city had to do was buy the nine EV charging stations and then plop them down exactly where they finished their work, and we were able to open that up within the past couple weeks. So it's a really great amenity. Then we also have our tennis court lighting at Cal Oak Sports Park. That was recently completed a couple weeks ago. This involved installation of new lighting poles and LED light fixtures. This is the first time these tennis courts have been lit, and those things have been in existence for several decades. So this is a really great amenity. So the lights are connected to a system that will allow staff to schedule the lights and also access the lights remotely. And it adds over 13 hours of playable time to each of the tennis courts. So that's a really great amenity for the residents. And then coming soon, the week of December 8th, we're also going to be putting lights in at the tennis courts at the community center. So that one is a little bit easier project. We already have the poles located there. There's already lights on the tennis court. This is just changing those to state-of-the-art LED fixtures, plus they're going to be connected to a new sub-panel that's going to allow remote access and the ability to schedule those lights as well. So that's my update. Any questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
And last but certainly not least, Victor's going to talk to us about the aquatics program.
So good evening, Mayors and members of the City Council. I'm here this evening to provide an update for the 2025 aquatics season. As you know, following the closure of Cal Oak Sports Park pool, CSD successfully transitioned all our summer aquatics program over to Vista Marietta High School through a continued partnership with the Marietta Valley Unified School District. I do want to take a moment to recognize and thank Deputy Superintendent Darren Daniels and his team and the whole entire Vista Marietta High School staff who supported us and helped us the whole year make the aquatic season run very smoothly. So a couple things about our programs. Our programs operated through June 7th through September 28th, offering summer—sorry—swimming lessons, public swim, and lap swim for residents of all ages, with lifeguard instructors, services provided by Swan Aquatics, and through our vendor agreements. I did want to provide some analytics here, so program performance highlights. Between 2024 and 2025, we saw a significant increase between participation across nearly every program we provided—that's lap swim, public swim, and swimming lessons. Overall, monthly participation increased by 73%, with more than 3,300 program visits this season. This increase demonstrates strong community engagement and a successful transition to Vista Marietta High School. Sorry. I do want to highlight some things that we did well this season. We combined swimming lesson blocks and program periods, which increased our program flow, lifeguard coverage, and overall safety. We also did a great overall campaign through social media. We did enhanced social media engagement, A-Frame signage, banners all throughout the cities and the parks, which made residents aware that we had programs at Vista Marietta. And also, that just increased more engagement with our programs. We also installed a new tough shed on the pool deck that just helped us be more efficient with our day-to-day operations and also helped us not be confused with, you know, onsite staff and school district staff. And also, just our continued collaboration with Swan Aquatics, the school district, we were able just to be super professional, and we had a lot of compliments with our programs. So what are our next steps? We're going to continue to have our partnership with our Swan Aquatics lifeguard service vendor. We're going to continue to coordinate with the school district, have a preseason meeting before the end of the year, just to get all our ducks in a row before the new season. We're going to continue expanding on early marketing and social media campaigns to increase efforts in registration, to bring awareness to the program starting April here through May. You know, always looking for staff, for more flexibility for staff, and exploring more unique ways to connect communities through maybe movies in the pool or something fun like that through the season. So yeah, that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Yes, I'd like to invite Deputy Superintendent Daniels to come up. As most of you know, I'm a huge proponent of having good relations between the city and the school district. I've been doing whatever I can to foster that. If you would like to say a few words of how this collaboration has gone, I'd appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate the time. I've been in the school district for—gosh, I hate to say it, I'm going to age myself—but I think I'm nearing 24 years this next year. And over my 24 years as a district administrator, I've been able to see the best and the worst parts of the relationship at the city and the district as shared. I'm very thrilled to be able to say, over the past—I'm going to say three years—at least from the seat that I'm sitting in currently—I oversee the district's business and operations divisions. And I think under the leadership of Justin Clifton and Kristen, been really able to see just that mutual outreach, to be able to really share in the delivering of services for the residents of Marietta. You know, we deal with families, and we—you know, we serve over 21,000 students. And being able to take the services beyond the belt of a school district is wildly important to our school board, our superintendent, and all of our district staff. To be able to provide just, you know, a small partnership—it's a give-and-take, right? You know, yeah, we have pools. We want our families to be able to utilize them. Conversely, you guys do provide a lot of services for our families as well, be it through fire services or police services. We're extraordinarily grateful for the partnership. I get to work with Ron a lot just in business and get to see a lot of you at different district events. And so just so appreciative of this relationship that has grown over the past 20—my gosh, 24 years. It's been remarkable because again, when I first started, it was very clear. There's a lot of challenges in front of us. But I can tell you from the seat I sit in today, having worked for with over four superintendents in our school district, I don't believe that the relationship has been so strong. So I just appreciate the commitment from the city, Mayor Warren, Council. Appreciate you guys always just kind of walking along each side of each other to make sure we're able to do what's very best for this community. And so thanks, Ron, for calling me.
Thank you. Dr. DeForest?
I just—I'd just like to say thank you as well. And I love the collaboration that we have together, and that was—that showed at the Facilities Master Plan. I was able to attend that, and the collaboration between the architects and the community was very, very parent. And I just want to say thank you so much for your ongoing relationship. And being a previous school board member, it's very dear and true to my heart that we maintain that healthy relationship. So—and I thank you for reaching out as well and always making sure that there's great communication coming between the two of us. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes my announcements.
Okay. Thank you so much. At this time, we're going to move on to Governing Body Commission Committee Board Reports and Announcements. This is the opportunity for City Council to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, and commission—committee and board meetings attendance. Governing Body announcements is the opportunity for the City Council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Each report shall not exceed five minutes, and we're going to start off with Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, because of the holiday, I didn't prepare anything and get anything to Crystal, but I'm going to challenge my Mayor Pro Tem—because he's a very good ad libber when it comes to government board announcements. So I would just like to say that I attended the Marietta Baker to Vegas PD fundraiser, which was a lot of fun. My husband ended up fourth place in the poker tournament. Needless to say, I bought in twice. So I was donating a lot and losing lots, but it was great fun. And I know they raised great money for that Baker to Vegas team, which is super important. So also, I was very fortunate to take a tour of our MIC with our CEO of our Chamber of Commerce, Patrick Ellis. It was an amazing tour, being that I was a microbiologist and got a master's in micro-molecular biology and nerded out completely in the wet lab. So also, I'm going to put together a collaboration with Cal Poly Pomona, and hopefully that maybe we'll get some of their hand-me-downs for our new wet lab. So that was amazing, and it is scheduled to ribbon-cut in February, I was told. But those of you who don't know what a wet lab is, it is an amazing lab that there is not one. UCR is our closest, so just absolutely fantastic that we could have that in our region for various different startup organizations in the genomics world. So also, I'd just like to hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving and we're heading into happy holidays. I'd like to all wish you a Merry Christmas. And pretty soon, it will be a new year, so I cannot believe that's around the corner. So thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and I think I channeled my Mayor Pro Tem very well. Thank you, John.
Well done. Well done. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Myself also—I did not. So I'm going to go off of memory myself. I did attend the Hillside Ordinance Workshop. So thank you so much to our staff and to our City Manager for that great workshop. I attended the Joint Mixer—Temecula, Wildomar, and Marietta. And it was really nice to see a lot of old friends coming together during the holiday time to support Habitat for Humanity, and the mayor was there along with myself. I also toured the Marietta Innovation Center. I'm not sure if Patrick is in the audience, but this is really going to put the city of Marietta on the map. And I look forward to the startups that will be coming to Marietta and from there permanently making their home within the medical industry here in Marietta. And I'm just so proud of Scott Agajanian, who's part of that team, along with Patrick Ellis and other staff members that really saw a vision. So great job, and great job again to Patrick for his vision. I attended the Festival of Trees event. It was a Riverside County University Healthcare Center, and they raised over $700,000 in selling Christmas trees. And the money will benefit the Trauma Center for Children at the University Healthcare Center. And it was a beautiful event. And I love when there's such a collaboration amongst cities in supporting our county. So it was a really lovely event. I attended WR-COG yesterday. I'm going to be writing up a report, and I'm still in the process of writing. There's some very interesting things that happened at the meeting yesterday, so I'd like to defer that to our next meeting, Mayor. So thank you so much, and happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Stone. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My list is short and sweet because I've been moving for the last week and a half. I did have a Santa Stops meeting back on November 25th, and Santa Stop starts tonight. So we are unable to be there, but hopefully if you guys have a Santa Stop in your area and you can go to mariettasantastops.com—I believe it is. Dot com? Dot org? I'm not sure. One of those. One of those dot somethings. You can go there, and you can see the maps. You can see where your house is. All of the council members will be on different routes throughout the next six days after tonight, so look out for that. And yesterday, I was at the Regional Conservation Authority, known as RCA. The two things I have to report out—it is dot org. Thank you. Is we elected—re-elected the same chair and vice chair that we had already, so Kevin Bash and Karen Spiegel will maintain those positions, and they've done a great job, so there is no reason to change. And they had a financial audit that came out unmodified, as they say in the accounting world, but a clean opinion, meaning the financials are doing well. I do have on my list that you'll see on the internet and elsewhere that I had a Town Square Park meeting today, but that was canceled, and so I didn't have time to take that off the list. And likewise, I wish everyone—I hope everyone had an enjoyable Thanksgiving, and we have one more meeting, so I'm going to save my Merry Christmases for then.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holliday. Mayor Pro Tem LaBelle?
You're up. Well, in good—in good fashion, the improv reporting out. I—I didn't have any meetings for my governing committees that I sit on, but I did eat some Thanksgiving food with my family. I pet some dogs, and I did a lot of dirt bike riding. So other than that, I had a really good, relaxing two weeks. So that's all I had to report out. Thank you.
Did you not visit the MIC?
That was the other—
Oh, that was the other week. Okay.
I was the first one to do it.
Oh, I was the second. Okay. I guess I'm last, so I will go. I did do my report. So I attended the Southwest Transportation T-NOW meeting and also the RTA meeting. And out of that meeting, the ridership for October is up 1.7% compared to the same time last year, and it's up 2.2% over the fiscal year of 2024. Wanted to remind everybody that RTA is offering free rides on all fixed routes, commuter link, and Go Microbuses starting at 2:30 AM on New Year's Eve. T-NOW Holiday Luncheon—they're going to have a luncheon for the T-NOW Committee, so that's going to be happening in December, this—towards the middle of the month. They also had an audit that is unmodified, a clean audit from an accounting firm, and the agency continues to be a good steward of the public funds that they manage. We are also doing a rebranding to help ridership with code of conduct. And that is very important because sometimes our employees—mainly the bus riders—are have to endure some pretty unsightly things. And so we now have a really strong code of conduct that we can fall back on with some disciplinary actions to make sure that our staff is safe. So that concludes that report. Moving on to my—I also attended the RCTC Riverside County Transportation Commission Budget Implementation Meeting, and there's nothing to report on on that. On my Governing Board announcements, I too attended the Joint Mixer. Great job by everybody. I have a picture of the—there's the trees that they have put up that you can buy tickets and hopefully win-win on—I believe it's the middle of December. It is so beautiful. It is—go to the mall and look at these trees. They're gorgeous. And everything goes back to Habitat for Humanity. So Tammy, great job with you and your staff, and everything was wonderful. I also attended Student of the Month, the breakfast. Outstanding student as always. That's always a highlight of the month. That evening, I also attended the Warm Springs Middle School Musical called Saturday School, and they hit it out of the park. It was fabulous. Did you know that there's a toy drive going on in town? It's called Inner Empire Toy Drive. I attended that yesterday and donated a couple of bikes to help some kids get some new bikes. And this morning, Councilmember Stone and I had the honor of honoring a gentleman. His name is Greg Gregory. He's a 95-year-old Navy fighter pilot. He was a member of the 13th Fighter Squadron in the Vietnam War. He had four tours. He landed his fighter jet 964 times on a carrier, including 98 night landings. He was a Top Gun instructor at Miramar. He's named on the USS Midway Pilot's Ready Room plaque. He served as a fighter pilot in the movie Top Gun. He was amazing. And it was so neat—we got to honor him today with a certificate and a pin from the city. And I don't know about you, Lori, but he is a wonderful man, and he is so proud to be a part of this community, and we were so honored to honor him this morning. So that was just amazing. And I finished out the day, as did Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Stone. We've all three attended the Oak Grove Contributors of Distinction Luncheon, which was lovely. That concludes my report. We are now going to move on—as I turn the page. We're going to move on to public comments. Any person may address the governing bodies on any subject pertaining to the city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Isn't it rich? Are we a pair? Me here at last on the ground, you in midair, sending the clowns. Isn't it bliss? Don't you approve? One who keeps tearing around, one who can't move. move. But where are the clowns? Send in the clowns. Just when I stopped opening doors, finally knowing the one that I wanted was yours. Making my entrance again with my usual flair. Shore of my lines, nobody's there. Don't you love a farce? My fault, I fear. I thought that you'd want what I want. Sorry, my dear. But where are the clowns? Send in the clowns. Don't bother, they're here. So, today, I also attended Oak Grove with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilmember Stone. And after everybody left, with the exception of Mayor Pro Tem and, and Councilmember Stone, I grabbed the microphone that was still hot and mentioned to the few that were left that that is a song that I often sing when I'm sitting out here. And Councilmember Stone challenged me and said, "I have $100 to donate to Oak Grove if you come in and sing that tonight at City Council." And Mayor Pro Tem, Lavelle matched that.
He doubled it, right?
So, so there's that. And before the meeting, I had a, I had a conference call with, with a client that's a former landowner here in town. And I told him about it, and he's gonna donate $500 to Oak Grove, so. And I'll wrap up here. I just, I wanna send a special thank you to Chief Henry for not sending, not sending one of the guys down. Anyway, thank you for indulging me, and happy holidays and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. That was great. Thank you. That was a great challenge. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, you may continue.
Okay. Catherine Barrett Fisher?
Always do that donation, always. Or if you do, noted, you have to take donations in our profit. Okay, so you have the favor, Drew. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Catherine Barrett Fisher, Executive Committee Chairwoman of CARRY, the Community Alliance for Riverside's Economy and Environment. And I want to invite you to a special meeting of the March Joint Powers Commission in their role as commissioners for the March Inland Port Airport Authority on December 17th at 6:30 p.m., that's a Wednesday, at the Riverside County Administrative Center Board of Supervisors Chambers at 480 Lemon Street in Riverside. This will be the final opportunity for people to comment on the plans to bring anywhere between 7,488 and 10,000-plus civilian cargo planes to March Air Reserve Base at the March Inland Port Airport. Our group is opposed to this because it endangers the very existence of the base. Cargo planes are very dangerous. They're dirty, they're noisy, they contribute to terrible air pollution, and they fly over Marietta. We all fully support our military base, and we want to preserve our military base. This is a map from the Air Force Air Installation Compatibility Use, oh, sure, sorry. This is a map from the Air Force Air Installation Compatible Use Zone. And if you can see here, here's the airport up here. This is the flight path. The planes generally come in here from the south, they make a loop, and they fly down over Marietta. And unlike a freeway, there are no lanes in the sky. So, this is just basically a guideline. And I live over here near Los Alamos, and Hancock are the closest major streets. And planes, civilian cargo planes have flown over my house at less than 10,000 feet. They're old, they're dirty, they're noisy, and it's just not something we need here in beautiful Marietta. So, I do have some cards with more information if anyone in the audience would like them. They're over on the table near the city clerk over there. And just want to alert you to this problem, and hope that you will take a look at this. Our website is on here, our phone number is on here if you'd like any more information. This chamber looks beautiful, the holiday decorations are gorgeous, and I'm gonna wish you all a Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me speak. Good evening, Mayor Sidney Warren and councilmembers. My name is Skip Phillip, and I live on Blackwood Road here in Marietta. I've been there for about 12 years, a quarter mile from Alter Marietta Elementary School. I'm here tonight because our neighborhood is under siege from a single property that's become a chronic nightmare, and because of our city lacks the tools to stop it. In the past week alone, police have responded, I'm nervous, I apologize. In the past week alone, police have responded to that house at least 12 times. Escalating threats, gun mentions, racial slurs, screaming at neighbors and law enforcement, nonstop yelling that keeps kids awake. And the adult son has been prowling fences at night in his underwear. Over the past year, it's easily had 100 calls to the Marietta Police Department. We're not just annoyed, we're terrified. This isn't isolated, it's a ticking time bomb. Next to an elementary school where children walk to school every day. Many, how many more incidents before someone, a child, a parent gets hurt? Our police are stretched thin, responding repeatedly to the same address instead of patrolling our streets. We don't have a chronic nuisance abatement ordinance yet, but hundreds of cities do, and they work. I urge you to enact one tonight, modeling directly off the City of Hemet California Ordinance 1850, which took effect May 12, 2012. Hemet's ROCS program targeted exactly this, properties draining public resources, and repeat disturbances threats and crimes. It declares a property a chronic nuisance after just a handful of verified calls, then notifies the owner to fix it. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Evict problem tenants, clean up enforced leases, or face civil fines. Cost recovery for police-fire responses, and even temporary closures, jail time, not, no jail time, just accountability. Since 2012, Hemet's seen real results. Fewer repeat calls, safer blocks and owners, safer, safer blocks, and owners stepping up voluntarily, voluntarily to avoid penalties. It's the same story elsewhere. San Diego cut drug house crimes by 35%. Lakewood, Ohio slashed overall disorder citywide without displacing it. And Spokane County abated six properties, problem properties in under five years. With dozens more fixed through warnings alone. These aren't harsh overreaches, they're proven tools that protect victims like us, hold negligent landlords accountable, and save taxpayers money. Our police could redirect those hundreds of hours to real, to real prevention. Council, this is your chance to act. Direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance based on Hemet's 1850. Use their exact language for the thresholds, process, and penalties, and bring it back to a vote next month. Neighbors are ready with logs, videos, and statements to support it. Protect our schools, our families, our peace. Enact this now before it's too late. Thank you very much for your time. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question? Mr. Phillips, can you give your physical address to the clerk? I'm just curious, what district do you live in?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely.
Thank you. You're welcome. Madam City Clerk?
Keith Gore.
Good evening. I'm not sure who to address this to specifically, so I'll just do it as a whole. I'm a resident of Marietta. I've been here a year. I live in Spencer's Crossing. Everyone that lives here transverses Clinton Keith. My, my vehicle sustained substantial damage because of the potholes or craters in the road. I pay $17,000 a year in taxes. So, my question is, why do I have to chase public risk management around the corner and down the street to have a reimbursement for my damages to my car? Everyone knows there's a problem, but yet it's not addressed. I've heard mention of pools and lining, that's great, but Clinton Keith needs to be addressed. Is there anyone that can respond to that, and what's gonna be done about this?
Justin?
I, I think the best thing to do would be get contact information, and we can make sure to get somebody in touch from our risk team.
I, they've already been in touch with me. I've been in contact with them. My question is, I'm having to deal with them for reimbursement, but it doesn't address what's not being done about that street.
Or, or.
And a large section, because we all live here, and we all use it, so you can't ignore it.
Yeah, so, so knowing that Spencer's Crossing is not actually in city limits, but want to get some clarification also by getting your information.
Sure.
So that we can make sure we understand what segment of roadway and get you some information about if it's within city limits, what, what might be on schedule.
The 215 as it crosses.
And, and actually, if you want to go out into the foyer, I think we have some team members that could talk to you presently.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
They're right there. They're gonna follow you out to the foyer.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
That concludes, that concludes public comments.
Okay, thank you very much. And before we move on to our consent calendar, it's my understanding that our city manager would like to say a few words?
Yes, Madam Mayor, regarding the consent calendar, first, I just want to highlight a couple of items that I think you will be interested in, and especially for the community washing. One of those is item number four, which is authorization to participate in filing an amicus brief to encourage the California Supreme Court to accept an appeal of a court decision by the, the Court of Appeals in a case called the New Commune DTLA LLC versus City of Redondo Beach, or otherwise the New Commune case. In that case, as you know, the State Department of HCD regarding housing requires cities to allocate units in, in what they call the arena cycle. Numerous cities have done that by implementing overlay zones in particular areas that, let's say it's a commercial area, so it enables housing. But if the area is developed as commercial, it may not end up being housing. So, there was a lawsuit filed against Redondo Beach for doing exactly that, for utilizing the overlay zone as a mechanism to meet the arena numbers. The Court of Appeals basically found that that was not lawful and not consistent with the state's process of establishing arena. So, we basically like participation to file an amicus encouraging the Supreme Courts, the state Supreme Court, to hear that case in hopes that it would be overturned. So, that can, again, be a viable mechanism for meeting the arena numbers. The other item I'd like to highlight is number five, which is just the award of a contract for the Alderwood Pickleball Courts. And that's simply to remind the community, I know some people have been waiting. My in-laws were visiting over the Thanksgiving break, and they said, "Where can we play pickleball?" They were ready with their rackets. And of course, with our limited availability, even on Thanksgiving Day and others, they're out on the courts, and, and they're busy. So, exciting to see that development coming. I'd also like to highlight item number seven, which is an amendment to contracts regarding some of our lobbying and grant support. But to do that a little more thoroughly, I know that we have Isaac Bravo here, as well as Ben Goldine, who's our federal legislative advocate from Townsend, that could tell you a little bit more about the extension of that contract, and specifically some of the good work that they've done to secure funding for the city of Marietta to the benefit of our residents. So, if it pleases the mayor and council, I'd like to just poll that item so that we could have a brief presentation.
I was gonna recommend that, so that would be great. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the consent calendar, knowing that item number seven has been polled. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless the specific items are removed from the consent calendar for a separate motion. Are there any requests from City Council to poll any consent calendar item other than number seven for discussion, or recuse themselves from voting? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. May I please have a motion in a second? I have a motion for Councilmember Holiday and a second by Councilmember DeForest. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you very much. At this time now, we're gonna move on to the poll consent item, number seven. And we'll, if City Manager Clifton would give help with the staff report, that would be great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council.
Sorry, I didn't see you down there.
It's okay.
Can't see over this. I know, I'm short.
Good evening. So, tonight before you for your considerations, two amendments to two distinct contracts that we have. We have one agreement with Townsend Public Affairs, who helps us with grants, and federal and state lobbying, and a second agreement with the Alchemy Group, which helps solely with the relationships that we have with Daryl Issa's office. Both of those are agreements before you tonight. The Townsend Public Affairs Agreement is in the amount of $414,000 over the three-year period. The Alchemy Group is only for one year. That is because of the recent vote on Prop 50, and we don't want to extend or overextend depending on the determinations of how that is gonna play out. Tonight, as City Manager Justin Clifton has said, I'm joined here by Ben Goldine, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Warren, members of the City Council. I am Ben Goldine, the federal advocacy manager at Townsend Public Affairs. I work with an entire team of state, federal, and state and federal lobbyists and grant writers, and it's been our pleasure to serve the city of Marietta since 2020 in all three of those capacities, federal advocacy, state advocacy, and grant writing. And as a firm, we've earned a reputation as champions for better communities. We work primarily with California cities, counties, and public agencies. And as such, we fully understand that you are stewards of taxpayer dollars, and by extension, so are we. And so, we're really proud to be able to come and talk about the successes we've had for the city, really bringing back a return on investment for the city. Because as you're spending taxpayer dollars, it's our goal to make sure we're bringing those back and that your investment is, is well, well paid for. And so, over the course of the five years we've worked for the city since 2020, we have helped the city secure more than $18 million in federal, state, and local grants. That's money bringing, bringing that money back to the city. And just some highlights, this includes $2.6 million for the Keller Interchange Project, thanks to our partnership with Congressman Ken Calvert, as well as $1.5 million that's currently pending, sponsored by Congressman Issa. We've also had success helping fund the Marietta Innovation Center, which I know Congresswoman Stone mentioned she has just toured, council, council member, excuse me, I work with congress members all the time, I apologize. Councilmember Stone mentioned she had, had toured recently. We had secured a $2.4 million grant for that project a couple of years ago to help get it, get it off the ground. It's really wonderful to see it coming to fruition now. And so, that's just a few of the examples of successes we've had for the city. We are, there is a lot of wonderful opportunities coming up in the new year, and we're really looking forward to continuing to partner with you and serve the city of Marietta. Thank you.
And, and Madam Mayor, if I could just add a little bit, want to point out that there is a modest increase in the amount of the, the contract with Townsend, but I also want to compliment them and their team. They had initially proposed a more significant increase, and not without substantiating and justifying the reason. My understanding is that they applied for more grants on behalf of this city than any of their other clients in, in California. So, not only are they working hard for us, but we're encouraging them to work hard for us by taking advantage of those grant opportunities. But when we also inform them that, you know, times are tight, and, and we're experiencing our own financial constraints, they were willing to negotiate a much more modest and gradual increase over the period of the three-year contract. So, want to compliment them for working with us, compliment Isaac for facilitating that conversation, and, and feel very good to support the increase that they're proposing at this point.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you for your presentation. We're gonna move on to, I was just gonna call your name.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. Ben, first of all, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to your entire team, your brilliant Richard Townsend as well, your, your leadership and your guidance when we've gone to Sacramento and Washington DC in, in lobbying for infrastructure and service dollars. You've been absolutely amazing. And 18 million, thank you. And $18 million, thank you so much for all of your hard work. I want to thank your team for leading the effort for the Southwest Elected Leaders Collaborative in Isaac and our Assistant City Manager, Kristin Crane. We are really making headways, ladies and gentlemen. We've been to Sacramento to lobby for infrastructure. As you know, traffic congestion in our freeways are very congested. And so I want to thank you so much, your entire team. So happy holidays to you. And again, Isaac, thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
We'll move on to questions from the council now. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing no questions. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. I'll move it back to council for discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, we're going to call for a motion in a second. I have a motion by Councilmember Holiday and a second by Mayor Protem Lovell.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you so very much, and thank you for all you do on behalf of our citizens in this wonderful city. We appreciate it. We're now moving on to public hearing. Item number 15, we're going to hear from staff regarding the fiscal year 2026-27 allocation of community development block grant funding. Is there any council member who needs to recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none. Is there staff out there? Who's present?
Can't see him.
Oh, wait a minute, I can't see. You weren't there. Okay. Welcome, sir. You may start whenever you are ready.
Hello again, Mayor, members of the city. Tonight before you for your consideration is the adoption of CDBG funding for fiscal year 26-27. And I apologize for all the rummaging. So a little bit of background on community development block grant funding, also known as CDBG funding. CDBG money is federal funds that the city receives annually through a formulaic process. That estimate is then has oversight through Riverside County. Ultimately, the city council makes the determination on how that funding is spent. CDBG, because it is federally funded, has national objectives, which are listed and presented in the screen here. And the city in 2021 was listed as an entitlement city, which means that we've received additional funding than regular cities in the formulaic calculation. So this year, we are estimating that we're going to receive $596,700 in CDBG funding. 20% of that, which is split between the city and the county, is for administrative expenses. 15% can go to public service projects, and the remaining funding is meant to go to city projects or whatever programs the city wishes to implement. So this is how the breakdown of the 20% allocation is calculated. $77,571 would go to Riverside County for their assistance with the city for CDBG oversight, and the city would continue the remaining amount of $41,769. So the 15% allocation is for public service projects, which are projects which can help nonprofits meet a council goal. And we'll get into those goals, I believe it's the next slide. Nope. The application period, so the city left out a notice of funding availability on October 8th. We alerted nonprofits via email, as well as through newspaper and the city website of the application being opened. We, the last day to submit was November 7th. And then tonight is when we're going to make the final recommendations and allocations of those CDBG dollars. These are the funding objectives that the city council has had in this year and prior years. Community food pantries, women's programs, domestic violence prevention programs, and youth development programs have been the priority. Nonprofits were scored and ranked. This year has been, was a little bit different than prior years. Riverside County asked to participate directly in the selection and scoring. So nobody's scored as high as in previous years due to that, but we still believe that we're provided a fair representation as the scores were recorded between the city, the city's consultant, and Riverside County. These are the scores. No organization, we had eight applicants, no organization scored less than 70, which would be the threshold where we would be considering not awarding any sort of funding. But that said, all of the applicants, at least, are strong enough to manage and administer the CDBG programs, and the allocations are to the right. Ultimately, the funding recommendation is decided by the city council, but this is staff's recommendation. It is not an easy task to do, because we do have to stay within that $89,505. The remaining pot of money that we have, we recommend that goes to the pedestrian safety improvement projects that the city currently does annually. These are ADA curb ramps, projects which help walkability within the city, and ADA compliance that is mandatory by the federal government. So the fiscal impact of this would be the expenditure of approximately $596,700 in CDBG funding, the administrative burn of $119,340, the pet safety project of $38785, and the nonprofit award of $89,505. And the action before you tonight would adopt a resolution, as well as adopt the allocation of these fundings going into the new fiscal year. This is staff's recommendation. And now we will move forward to the calculator, where we will look and see ultimately what the city council decides to award each nonprofit. Since this is a public hearing, there are speakers from organizations that would like to present and have discussions with council.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and start it off. Isaac, I'm going to, I would like to, good, you have that up. Do you have that, can you put this one back up on the screen, please? Number 11. It looks to me is that everything that everybody asked for was pretty much given, except in order for us to meet the number that we are allowed to give out, we had to deduct a little bit from two of them in order to meet those, that goal of that number of $89,505. That's correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So because we didn't have $92,500, everybody did is being recommended to get what they applied for, except for the two, so we dropped it down to meet the amount of money that we had to give out.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make, have the public hear that. Okay, we'll move on to questions. Mr. Holiday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Isaac, good presentation, appreciate that. Could you talk a little bit about the scoring, because obviously there's quite a difference between the top scores and the lower scores of why that is?
Right, and that is in part because of the inclusion of Riverside County scores. They rank a little bit harder than the city and the consultants that we have. Their scores were a lot lower than previous years. It doesn't necessarily reflect badly on the organization, it's just that's how heavily the scores were skewed due to the...
I'm talking about the difference between the top and the bottom. What would make that difference so great?
So the reason that there is that huge difference, if you can go back one slide, please. On the scoring, the large difference, let's go back one more, is here. Most of the scores from Riverside County were dropping and docking on capacity instability. A lot of the nonprofits that we have are not necessarily, they're solvent, but they are always at risk because they are nonprofit, nonprofit status. They provide that backup documentation to us. As an example, St. Martha's Food Pantry is, shows that it's running on, in the red. But that doesn't necessarily mean from the city's perspective that we would dock them so many points. However, because of the inclusion of the county scores, that kind of skewed them a little bit further down. And so the difference between these recommendations, they're a little bit more soluble and a little bit more experienced in CDBG funding and reporting, and that kind of skewed them higher up. That, however, doesn't mean that they aren't qualified to do it. It's just that's how they scored out, once we aggregated all of the scores from city, the consultant, and Riverside County.
I appreciate that. Cleared it up for me. I would suggest in the future, maybe you do our scores, their scores, and aggregate on the slide, so we can see all that information.
Yeah.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? Seeing none. We're going to bring it to, we're going to bring it up for, open up the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, are there any public testimony?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Warren, Voices for Children is the court-appointed special advocate or CASA program for Riverside County. We work with the Superior Court of the county to recruit, train, and support very special community members who are assigned by one of our five juvenile court judges to a child in foster care. The volunteers monitor their education, their placement, their medical, their needs, and really make sure that these children don't fall through the cracks, and that they receive an advocate in their corner to make sure that they thrive rather than just exist in care. The CDBG funding that you provide allows us to continue this invaluable work for the city's children. This fiscal year, Voices for Children so far has served 24 children who have been removed from their homes because of abuse, abandonment, and neglect in the city of Marietta. That's a cost of $2,000 per child. And I'd really like to briefly tell you about one of those children this evening. Neil has been diagnosed as severely autistic. When he came into foster care, he was separated from his brother, and visitation between the two of them was sporadic. Now Neil has a CASA. That has been resolved, as she was able to ask the judge to make sure that it was ordered to happen. She also learned that Neil has a fascination with trains and buses, and so she drove them both to a bus stop, and they rode the bus together for his very first time. Neil told his CASA that it was the best day of his life. I humbly ask you to consider granting our full request. You make a difference for lots of the vulnerable children in the city, and we thank you so much for making a difference in the lives of children like Neil by approving the CDBG funding for Voices for Children. Thank you so very much.
Good evening, council, and beautiful Mayor Warren. She's not looking at me, but hello. I'm Heather Sanford. I'm the CEO of Mission Hope, and it's so great to be here with you on Giving Tuesday. So today we gave back to our donors, and we're just grateful for this community who's so generous to not just Mission Hope, but all of the nonprofits here. And I'm a little sad about that score, Isaac, so I'm going to have to talk to him later. Just want to, out of respect, correct the screen, we are no longer called Community Mission of Hope or Rancho Damascitas. We are Mission Hope. We reestablished that DBA about 21 months ago, so I wanted you to be aware of that if you, if there's, so there's no confusion. But Mission Hope is here located locally. We've served families specifically in mainly Marietta and Temecula and throughout the valley here. We have a food pantry, a resource center, we have Hope Family Housing and the Empowerment Village, which hosts single moms and their children. And we've been in this valley for over 40 years. So we have deep roots here, we're very connected. We serve families, like I said, from Marietta specific. In the years past, we've gotten CDBG funds specifically for our empowerment village from the city of Marietta. This year, we requested it specifically to go to our Hope Family Housing program, because we have four houses that are located in Marietta that service five families right now in income qualified homes. One of those families I wanted to highlight is a man named Terrence. I know a couple of you were at our gala recently, and so you got to meet Terrence, he was one of our speakers. He found himself, all of a sudden overnight, becoming a single dad with four daughters because his wife, who's still alive, ended up having a life-altering stroke. And as you can imagine, his whole world flipped upside down in a matter of moments, and he went from project to project to project with several other local nonprofits, which was great, but he was bouncing around and there was no stability. And then he found Mission Hope. We were able to put him into a recently renovated home that we had. He is now there, he's been there about seven, eight months. His daughters, all four of them are now thriving in the school district. They are back into sports and theater. He has a job locally now, and they are doing so well, and that's because of this program we call Hope Family Housing, where we meet with them weekly and monthly with client advocates. It's not just a home, it's really an opportunity to rebuild a life that you, we believe every person deserves to live. So we're really humbly asking, even though our number's a little bit lower, Isaac, I still love you, than the rest, we'll take one for the team so that we can meet that mark with everyone else. But we would really humbly ask you to consider granting this CDBG fund to Mission Hope, as we've done several years, and we're so grateful for all of your support. So thank you guys so much, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
And I'll sing next time I come, if somebody wants to donate to me, so.
Oh, and she has a beautiful voice.
You guys can double. Let her do it, you double.
Marshall Hamilton.
I'm not going to sing. Get out of here.
Oh, Marshall.
I won't be singing, although that's a great offer. My name is Marshall Hamilton.
Do you dance?
Nope, I don't, yep, not public entertainment. I'm not meant for it.
I gave you an out.
Yeah, no. My name is Marshall Hamilton, I'm the executive director for the Safe Family Justice Centers. We're the domestic violence service provider for the county of Riverside. And so one thing that is really important, ooh, do I have a clicker?
Who?
Yay. One thing that we, I like to go over is just the amount of services that we provide. So one of the most requested services that we receive asked for is restraining orders. So we're actively protecting people who are going through kind of the worst times in their lives, right? The people that are supposed to be, who are supposed to love them are now hurting them. And so we, we serve both victims of domestic violence, as well as their children, victims of child abuse and elder abuse as well. We provide confidential counseling through peer counselors, and our advocates provide support with basic needs, youth empowerment groups. We really try to wrap the family in services to be able to exit that relationship safely. And we're one of the only service providers doing that work in Riverside County, and we were born here in the Southwest Valley. So it's really important work that we do. We broke down the numbers a little bit based on the amount of services and calls for service that law enforcement is receiving for domestic violence. So you'll see the red ones up there. For a population of about 112,000 during this 2024 period, domestic violence calls in Marietta were about 274. So it's a, it's a high number. A lot of people in this community are going through violent relationships or violent times in their family. And Safe Family Justice Center, as of in 2024, so that same period, we served about 250 people. So when we're looking at that need, about 50% of domestic violence calls go unreported. So we're, we're dealing with people that law enforcement is dealing with, that the court is dealing with, as well as people that nobody is dealing with, and providing those safety services. Those are our offices. But I just wanted to highlight the services that we provide, and then thank you so much for your guys' funding that does really support the city of Marietta residents that come in looking for services, and there's, there's a lot of them, unfortunately. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk?
Harley Bennett Vahey.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Warren and city council members. I'm honored to be here along with the rest of the amazing community-based organizations that operate here in Marietta. I want to thank you guys for your ongoing support of our mission and the work that we do for the residents of Marietta. It's a privilege to be able to provide the services that we do every day to the youth, kids, and teens of Marietta. We operate a clubhouse at the Calloch Sports Park. We have been in Marietta for over 30 years in providing services to youth and families. We are very excited that we are going to soon start operating services in the affordable housing development at Oakview Ranch over on Adams. And this funding, we've asked for an increase this year over past years for CDBG funding because... So we are able to use a lot of the money and the funding from CDBG to help support the services that we will provide onsite there for the residents. We will be providing services to at least 20 of the residents free of charge. If more need our services, we will go ahead and provide those to them as well. So funding through CDBG is vital to what we do. We would not be able to do the services to help fill the gap between the cost of our programs and what we actually charge families to do those programs for them. We give kids a safe place to go when school is out of session. We allow parents to go to work, to provide for their families by giving them that safe space for kids to go. And they get peer support, they get mentorship, they are engaged the entire time that they're with us. We, we love them, and we are, like I said, privileged to be able to provide those services to them every day and to have the trust of families that they will send their kids to us. So thank you for your consideration. Thank you again for your ongoing support of what we do, and I wish you guys happy holidays and just thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk?
Savannah Siaha.
Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, council members and mayors. My name is Savannah Seja, and I'm here on behalf of Western Eagle Foundation. Thank you once again for welcoming me. I truly am grateful for the time you give to listen, learn, and understand the needs of families in our community. Your support over the years has made a tremendous difference, and we never take that for granted. Western Eagle was founded in 1993 by my grandpa to fight food insecurity and to ensure that families facing food insecurity have reliable access to nutritious food. And today, that mission is more vital than ever. The focus of our work and what I'm here to share with you today is our Free Food Pantry Program, which has grown significantly and continues to grow every single distribution. Every single, or every two weeks, we provide free food to families who are struggling to make ends meet. This includes fresh produce, pantry stables, and essential items that help keep households stable. When the program first began, we saw a small, steady group of families, but as the economic landscape has shifted, the need has increased dramatically. Today, we serve over 300 families every two weeks, and that number rises almost every distribution. We see seniors choosing between groceries and medication, single parents working multiple jobs, families dealing with sudden emergencies, and the individuals simply trying to stay afloat as costs continue to rise. The growth isn't just numbers, it's real people who rely on us, people who show up with gratitude, with hope, and sometimes in tears because they weren't sure if they were going to be able to feed their families. Thanks to the foundation laid by this council's longstanding support, we've been able to meet that need, and I want to express how deeply we appreciate that. Your understanding of the challenges our residents face and our ongoing recognition of programs like ours have allowed us to keep this biweekly distribution consistent, reliable, and dignified. Our impact goes beyond food distribution. Through our partnerships with other agencies and our Work Development Volunteer Program, we support individuals from at-risk groups, creating a space where people can both receive and give back. Many of our volunteers are rebuilding their lives, gaining confidence and purpose as they help serve the community. But at the heart of everything is our Free Food Pantry Program and the families who depend on it. The need continues to grow, and so does our commitment to ensuring that no one leaves empty-handed. Thank you again for your time, for your compassion, and your continued belief in the work that we do. We're proud to serve this community, and we're grateful every day for the opportunity to make a difference in the lives and the families who come to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Tammy Mann.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Tammy Marine. I can't write very well, so. But I'm the CEO of Habitat Humanity in Land Valley, and I too have a question, will have a question for Isaac. There's always something to learn and grow from, and I'm not sure why we scored at the bottom, but I did want you to know that it isn't because of capacity, it isn't because of solvency, and it isn't because of experience with CDBG, because we work with six of the nine cities we serve and have for the last 15 years. It could be because this is the second time we've asked for funds from the city of Marietta, and we haven't fully expended the first allotment, so maybe that's it. I don't know. But I'm going to find out because I trust the city and county and want to be a stronger nonprofit because of it. But anyway, I'm here to thank you for your continued partnership with us. We're, the recommendation of $10,000 of CDBG allocation would go to our senior home repair program. It's one of our most meaningful services we provide to Marietta. The seniors we serve are often living with safety hazards, deferred maintenance, and code violations that they simply cannot address on their own, and they want nothing more but to have a safe place where they can age in place. So last year, this allocation helped us to complete multiple repairs, and we're still working with that, those dollars. But we have projects already underway, including yard cleanups, painting, accessibility improvements, and health and safety fixes, but the need is growing. And right now, we have 16 Marietta seniors on our waitlist, and each one of those represent a household of declining living conditions that need our timely support. So the $10,000 recommendation is not just funding, it's dignity, safety, stability for the seniors who built this community. And your partnership allows us to step in with compassion and practical help so they can remain in their homes safely and with pride. We are genuinely thankful for our relationship with Marietta. We hope to see it prosper and, and grow in the years and months to come, and we thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk?
Mary Ann Tams.
Thank you for having us here, City Council and everybody, and Kristin, a friendly face, and Lori, and all you all are going to be friendly faces. So I do appreciate, most of all, that the city gives us that property, that we're able to garden on that property, and we appreciate it every single day. That I wanted to get out first off and foremost. And what we are is a job site location for day programs for special needs adults, so that our adults come to the farm, and they learn how to grow produce from seed to harvest, and just this very day, we were planting seeds in soil. So it's happening right now. And once harvested, all that produce, because people say, well, can I come over and buy some? I says, no, no, no. This is all donated to the local food banks. One of them is Mission of Hope, St. Martha's, St. Vincent de Paul, other places. We all donate that, and we're happy to do that, and the kids love to harvest, and we get them to eat some vegetables occasionally, not just McDonald's, which is very exciting always, but we get them to eat vegetables and enjoy growing them. It's a social situation. You put a picnic table out with a bunch of young people, and they're going to socialize. They're not looking at this or watching TV. They're talking. They're communicating. They're learning. We have a learning component now, that we actually teach them something every single week. It could be about pine cones, which is coming up, of course, or we can talk about, like today, we were talking about seeds.
I don't want to interrupt you, but I hear you have a video, and I don't want you to run out of time.
Okay, yes.
Could you roll the video, please?
This is perfect. It was done moment. This has happened. And we get about, I would say, close to 100 people a week, 75 to 100. And they come in the day program, and they get to be out in the sunshine, and there's someone planting. And he did it. He's part of that process of helping his community. Because we harvest that, and then we take it to the food bank. And there's our grove up there. There's my daughter, helping, helping. And we've got wonderful volunteers that work with our people. They're here tonight. Chitima, there's Liam Ellis, and that's Patrick's son. He comes. So we have a great time, and that's it at all right there. Thank you so very much. Thank you for listening. We appreciate you. God bless you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments. Madam Mayor?
Oh, thank you very much. I'm going to ask if there's any more deliberation by council. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I am going to make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation. Do I have a second? Oops, wait a minute, let's try that again. Can you reset that, please? Thank you. We have a second by Mayor... Oh, okay, come on. We have a... Are we set now? We're okay? All right, we have a motion by myself, Mayor Cindy Warren, and we have a second by Mayor Prochambel. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously 5-0.
Congratulations. Yeah, you can clap. We're going to move on to our discussion items, and we're going to move on to item number 16, the fiscal year 2025-26 first quarter financial status report and proposed budget adjustments. Welcome, staff.
Good evening.
Hello. Wait a minute. Hello, now I can see you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council members, city staff, and members of the public. Javier Carcamo, Director of Finance. Also here with us is Jennifer Terry, our Finance Manager, and together, we are here to present you the fiscal year '26 first quarter budget update. Quick overview, so we are currently in the first year of the biannual budget, so part of our best management practices includes providing you a quarterly budget update, making the necessary changes to the budget based on the economy and adapting to city business needs. This report will also provide an update of the first quarter, which covers for the period between July 1st and September 30th. We will provide an overview of the citywide level. However, the summary for each major funds is included in the agenda report as attachment one. We will provide an overview of the unassigned fund balance for the five major funds. We're going to propose changes to the scheduled authorized positions, and then, lastly, we will close with a future budget update and the recommended actions. So first, we want to provide a snapshot of the city's financial position at the end of the first quarter. As of September 30th, the city has collected just over $22 million in revenues. Of that, over half was collected in the city's other miscellaneous revenue accounts. The majority of what was collected has been from development impact fees and from federal and state grants. The next revenue line item we want to discuss is the city's license and permit fee revenues, which are trending higher in the first quarter than anticipated. The city collected approximately $900,000, which is about $480,000 more or greater than what we collected at the same period of time last year. The primary driver of the greater license and permit fees revenue was from residential properties, specifically for permits for multifamily units. The final revenue item we wanted to draw attention is the two tax revenue sources. Sales tax is generally collected on a two-month delay, and it's currently, the currently, so far what we have collected is currently on par with the budget. The $4 million shown in here in this slide is one month of collections for the general fund and Measure T. Property tax revenue generally is received in late January or early February and will not be reflected until the third quarter budget update. Moving on to the expenditures, as of September 30th, the city has expended over $38.7 million. Most budget categories are under where we would normally anticipate at this time during the first quarter, with the exception of the CAP expenditures. In prior years, we have reported these expenditures as part of the operational maintenance and capital outlay, but now we have separated those, split those to be shown separately, providing a bit clarity and transparency in the city's expenditures. CAP expenses typically do not have a budget established in the operating budget side, which is why it appears to be over budget by over 3,800%. But when in fact, the budget itself is on track with the CAP that we established during the last year. The other item we wanted to discuss briefly is also the transfers. For the first quarter, it appears to be significantly higher at 45%. This is due to the transfer from the general fund and Measure T Fleet Reserve to establish the vehicle replacement fund in the amount of seven, approximately $7 million. We decided to transfer the funds in a lump sum amount so the program could start generating investment earnings in the vehicle replacement fund for future acquisitions. This budget update includes a few department requests, expenditures, appropriations, or budget based on actual cost of the items, as well as unplanned expenditures and expenditure budgets that were missed during the biannual budget process. The proposed revenue adjustment includes a minor increase of approximately $10,000. The, the most significant, significant proposed adjustment is in the expenditure section in the approximate amount of $743,000. The proposed adjustment for personnel costs is about $88,000. This is primarily to add budget for overtime within the police department's crime prevention fund, as well as to add budget to the building and safety divisions to migrate their contract temporary office assistant to a full-time permanent position. The operational maintenance, we are proposing to increase the budget by approximately $644,000. Roughly $49,000 of that is a request from our police department that, of which that budget was approved by you council back in the third quarter of last fiscal year. Unfortunately, our police department did not have adequate time to utilize the budget, so we are rolling the request forward to the current fiscal year. Fire and PD are also requesting the appropriation of their special revenue funds balance totaling approximately $504,000 between the two departments. All remaining expenditures, again, a request are for items that were inadvertently excluded from the biannual budget process or have been denoted since the adoption. We are also proposing an adjustment to the transfers in and transfer out of approximately $728,000. $28,000 is associated with a transfer between the special revenue funds, the general fund, to recover costs associated with some police services. The other $700,000 is a transfer to, from the general fund, using unassigned fund balance to the general fund capital for certain CAP projects. Speaking of those CAP budget adjustments, those are also identified in this slide. For the sake of time and transparency, we won't discuss them in details. And with that, I will turn it over to Jennifer Terry, who will talk to you about the unassigned fund balances.
Thank you, Javier. So this slide represents the, reflects the fiscal year '25 ending balances. We will be presenting the year-end budget update to council in January, so I won't go over that portion in detail, but bottom line are, we had budgetary savings and higher-than-anticipated revenues, which resulted in a higher unassigned fund balance, and that carries over into fiscal year '26. The proposed budget requests are reflected in the, in the second table at the bottom.
And with that, I will turn it over to Jennifer Terry, who will talk to you about the unassigned fund balances.
Thank you, Javier. So this slide represents the, reflects the fiscal year 25 ending balances. We will be presenting the year-end budget update to council in January, so I won't go over that portion in detail. But bottom line are, we had budgetary savings and higher-than-anticipated revenues, which resulted in a higher unassigned fund balance. And that carries over into fiscal year 26. The proposed budget requests are reflected in the, in the second table at the bottom. And the, the ending unassigned fund balance for general fund is $32.1 million. And Measure T is $16.2 million, giving us a total, estimated unassigned fund balance of $48.9 million at the end of the fiscal year. The other item we wanted to highlight is the proposed changes to the schedule of authorized positions. We currently have 465 full-time equivalent positions that we have approved for, to serve our residents. There are some changes in titles for the municipal services department, that newly-created department that took some, some public works facilities or public works functions, as well as park maintenance. There's also some movements for department efficiencies. You'll see the negative, or the red crossouts and the new position names there. Ultimately, we have a net impact of two additional FTEs. One was a grant-funded, approved admin assistant. That item went to council back in April, and it was missed getting added into the schedule of authorized positions. And then the building and safety, long-term contract temporary employee that Javier mentioned earlier is being converted to a full-time equivalent. So our new FTE or full-time equivalent positions, based on approval, it would be 467. Our future budget updates, as I mentioned before, January will be our year-end budget update. We'll have finished our audit by then, and you'll be receiving our final, final audited figures. March will be our mid-year budget update. That budget update is usually a fairly substantial budget update, where we will be reviewing our revenues and updating as necessary. Then in May will be our third quarter budget update, and the year-end budget update would be in, in December of next year. And our recommended actions tonight are to accept the report, adjust the fiscal year 25-26 operating budget, amend the fiscal year 25-26 capital improvement budget, approve the use of assigned fund balance for the fire fund, and approve the updated schedule of authorized positions. This concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. A great presentation. Questions? Dr. Lisa DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couldn't find my button. All right. Javier and Jennifer, thank you so much for the amazing detailed presentation. So when I looked at this, it looks like our sales tax is flat. Is that what you would also say, that we are not losing or gaining?
The sales tax budget is, is, or our, our sales tax revenues collected to date are on par with our, with our budgeted revenue.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, which, which is, which is 3% increase?
It's a 3% increase over prior year, yes.
And you talked about the transfers in and out for the vehicle repair fund? Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, we had approximately $8 million set aside in our sustainability reserves that we're moving into the newly-created replacement reserve program. And we're just removing that, we've removed those funds from our sustainability reserves and allocating them to that program. So it's not general fund or Measure T collecting that interest earnings any longer. It will be the replacement, the vehicle replacement fund.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And just kind of looking over our, our budget update for our unassigned fund balance, there's a significant drop from our 61 million to our 48 million. Could you elaborate on that a little bit for me?
I can.
Okay, yes.
So as part of the budget adoption, we came forward with a proposed use, or the proposed use of some unassigned fund balance into a reserve. So primarily, I believe that we recommended approximately $6 million to set aside for a economic contingency, using unassigned fund balance. There were also $3.5 million that we had set reserves in the CSD facilities reserve that we're utilizing for the purpose to loan that to the library development impact fee to fully fund the library project, library expansion project. And so those are the two significant use of unassigned fund balance, moving them from unassigned into the reserve for those purposes.
Thank you for clarifying that for transparency. And I think that's all I have. And I just want to thank you again for the report, and I appreciate you being able to elaborate on even the smallest. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers in the queue, I am going to, Madam, I'm going to ask many, Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. At this time, I would bring it back to council for any discussion? I don't see any discussion. So what I'm asking is, we need to provide direct and clarify a motion to call for a motion in a second at this time? And can you state your motion, please, Mr. Holiday?
Move staffs for recommendation.
Thank you. I have a first by Councilmember Holiday, and I have a second by Councilmember DeForest. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously 5-0.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. We appreciate all your hard work. We're going to move on to item number 17, Legislative Workshop Subcommittee Appointments for 2026. Staff? Oh, staff? Come on down. It's exactly what I'm thinking. Are you, is she singing?
No.
Oh. Is that what you asked? Oh, I didn't hear that. I just was wondering. Are you sure you don't want to?
I wish I could see you.
See? Okay.
I could see Justin.
See?
Good evening, city council. So I'm here to talk about the Legislative Work Group Subcommittee Appointments for 2026. Before I do, I'm just going to go ahead and remind folks what the Legislative Work Group Committee Subcommittee does. It's a standing committee, and it's working with the city manager to review and revise the legislative platform. And that's prior to council adoption. And also with that, it's a meeting with legislators and lobbyists and all of that fun stuff. That includes actually traveling to Sacramento and Washington DC when applicable. And then lastly, the representatives. So this council has updated this subcommittee to be, to have two levels, one for state and one for federal. And so with that, the mayor is a representative on both of those. So whatever you do tonight, just know that the newly-appointed mayor will actually naturally sit on both of those local levels. So here's past and current membership. I thought that might be helpful for you to see how many of you have sat on it, who hasn't, opportunities, continuity, whatever it is this council's looking to do. 2021, it was Mayor Protem DeForest and Councilmember Stone. 2022, at the time, it was a quarterly rotation. So the mayor, of course, was the representative, who was Mayor Ingram at the time. And quarterly, there was a rotation. So each council member was able to represent. 2023, it was updated to where there was no longer quarterly, and at that time, it was Mayor DeForest and Mayor Protem Stone. 2024 is when this council did that split per se, federal and state. And so with that, those are the representatives there. And then your current membership right now of 2025, for the federal and the state, it's Mayor Warren, as she's the current mayor. And for the federal, it's Councilmember Stone, and for the state, it is Councilmember DeForest.
Excuse me, Crystal, that's reversed. I was federal and Councilmember Stone was state.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. So it's reversed. And so with that, that's the past and current membership. I'm really looking, I'm leaning on this council and of course, the city manager to get through this process, because as you know, normally, we do these appointments in January after there's been a new mayor and when city business starts, you know, moving forward. But at this time, the city manager has asked me to bring it forward due to current shutdown, government shutdown, and he can speak to exactly why. That is, but I'm really leaning on him and this council to kind of determine who you would like to appoint, if that is what you want to do today. If you keep it, if you choose not to appoint, we'll just keep it as is, like we normally do, and it will remain the same until January 20th. And based off of how that discussion goes, then I'll start seeking discussion nominations and appointments. So I would love to lean on the city manager if I could.
Yep. Would you?
Yeah, and just to clarify or add some additional context, we had a legislative lobbying trip to Washington DC scheduled for earlier in this year. It was delayed because of the shutdown. As most of you know, the government was funded until January 20th. We anticipate another possible shutdown at the end of January, and we want to make sure we can hit the appropriations window, which really requires us to schedule that trip near immediately, either for early or mid-January, but before January 20th. So we're asking to make those appointments sooner than usual, so that we can proceed scheduling that trip. And as long as we're here and approaching the end of the year, it made sense to us to go ahead and do the state and the federal. But council also has the option, at least to address the federal, so we can schedule that trip and defer the state if you would choose.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're going to bring it back for, let's see here, we're going to do, council, I'm going to go council questions or discussion, whatever you want to do. So I have Lisa DeForest in the queue.
I would just like to say that due to the government shutdown, even though we had many meetings, and I thank Isaac for all of those meetings and facilitating many meetings, even with Mount San Yuceno, I've continued to nurture the relationship with Congressman Isa and Calvert, speaking to Calvert yesterday, also establishing a relationship with Young Kim. I would love to stay on the federal, because I feel like the groundwork has already been laid, the communication has already been done. Also, the collaboration now between the city and Mount San Yuceno, which I have a 30-year relationship with the president, Roger Schultz, to maybe push forward a regional training center, which would be funded and manned by the city of Marietta for training. We already have that relationship with the school district. So we could pull the relationship with community college with the city, which is something that is being done at the university center, as well as with higher education moving forward. Also, I spoke to the member of the House of Transportation and Infrastructure, Representative Congressman Gar Mendy, about our Keller Road, and also have facilitated a meeting with him. I have continued our relationship with Caltrans and Catalina Pinning and her two staff, one living in Temecula or did live in Temecula. So I think the strength here is in partnership and communication and the, the ground that has already been laid. And I think that meeting with staff and having direct communication with our congressman is very, very important. So just, I would like to stay with the federal and would be available and to continue the way it is with keeping it separate. I do think that's very highly effective, especially it allows us to establish relationships moving forward. Looking back at approving our Townsend, I was, I directly personally worked with Isa for, for the almost $1 million for the mobile command post. Also, I got to work when I was mayor directly for Keller Road money coming from Calvert. So I've been instrumental in bringing money and relationships to the city of Marietta, and I would like to continue that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holiday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was curious, when would this trip be scheduled? We're attempting to schedule it currently, and we have two windows of opportunity that we've identified, one in early January, so rough, as early as January 2nd, and another window that would kind of immediately precede the potential second shutdown, January 20th. I think that's around the 16th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Lavelle.
Thank you. Just wanted to ask about the, you mentioned the Regional Training Center, Councilwoman DeForest. I don't think that's on the priority list. So should that be considered at this point for discussion?
Well, the reason why it's on the list is because Marietta doesn't have any educational facility from Mount San Yuceno. So with higher education being a priority in our region, economic growth as well, and we already have the relationship with our Marietta Valley Fire, which could facilitate going to regional training. I realize it's not a top priority for us, because we need Fire Station 6, and we need, we need a lot of things moving forward. But Mount San Yuceno was also going to attend a few days before, when we got there or when we were lobbying, and they are actually lobbying for the city of Marietta for a regional training center. So it's a win for the city of Marietta, because it would bring a tower, which we need desperately for firefighters, and it would bring some training facilities for our police as well. So the collaboration with higher ed, with Mount San Yuceno, would be very advantageous for us as a city. Look at the stadium that is at Menifee. You know, look at, even there is a small regional culinary that just started in Elsinore. Some of President Schultz's legacy is in this entire community, except the city of Marietta has been left out. So this is a legacy project for him to leave. He's announced his retirement, so I'm hoping that Marietta can step in there and see if we can't get part of that legacy and that he leaves as an educator for our city as well.
The, the stadium and the Elsinore facility were already in place, though, so he, they were just basically built onto those. They never had an anchor spot here in Marietta, correct?
So they, they do not have anything, they didn't have anything in Elsinore either. That's an old Elsinore building that they are refurbishing and putting in culinary arts. So the stadium was part, it was college-owned, yes, it was part of the college project, part of their bond. But that's not to say that if they did go out for a Mount San Yuceno bond, they could not bond for a regional training center for, that just happened to be in Marietta. So we've already had many talks, going all the way back to Congressman Isa and all the way back to, you know, we do have plans. We, we put, as a, as a council, we approved to go to the architectural design, not go to actually the specifics, but to the architectural drawings for our regional training center.
Yeah, I think that was like, I remember the first year I was on, the, the difference between bonding and advocating for federal dollars, though, were completely different, right?
Yes, that is very true. But part of what Mount San Yuceno can do is the collaborational and regional approach between an educational entity and a city is very, very powerful. And higher ed is everyone's, and that's considered higher ed, right? We would have, we'd be turning out firefighters and police officers, as well as giving some more training to our region.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting.
I would like the council to consider, if they would, allowing Dr. would, allowing Dr. DeForest and I to finish what we started, when we've been working very hard this year, and allow us to take the trip in January for continuity, so that the people we've been meeting with, the people we've been talking to, we keep that continuity. And in January, after we, when we come back to council, we set up new guidelines for federal and state moving forward after that trip. However, if it is the first week in January, I would not be able to go, and then I would ask that, that the Mayor Protem Lovell will be taking my place.
Are we taking questions?
Yep.
Are you, are you putting that?
We're supposed to be doing questions.
Yeah.
So that's what I was, that's what I was looking at. Any other further comments or questions at this time?
Question?
Seeing none? Yeah. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Seeing none.
Thank you. I'll bring it back for final discussion with council, and I have Councilmember Holiday.
One of the, one of the concerns that I have is if we keep the same people, and I understand the relationships, I understand the continuity, we keep the same people long-term, eventually that person's termed out, and then that connection goes away. I think personally it should be the mayor and Mayor Protem, whomever that is, because the Mayor Protem typically moves to mayor, and there's at least a two-year continuity. And then as that mayor terms out, the new mayor, Protem, has built that same continuity. And I should, I think it should be the same for federal and state. So we maintain that continuity and the handoff of those relationships. Obviously, Councilmember DeForest, as many years has been on these committees, I've, I've.
I've only gone once.
But you've been on the committee for a long time.
I just make phone calls every month.
I understand. And I would hope that, obviously, as you're coming towards the end of your term, being termed out, you would somehow hand off that relationship to someone else on the council. I think it's important to have that, that ongoing connection versus Marietta losing that connection, because somebody's termed out.
But I'm, I have longer term on the council right now than you possibly do. You're up for reelection.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
So, I mean, so how is that?
That's why I said mayor and Mayor Protem. I wasn't saying me, I was saying mayor, Mayor Protem.
But there's a hypothetical sitting here, though.
Sure. Manager, City Manager Justin.
Manager, City Manager.
Multiple titles. How, with the relationships, as Councilmember Holiday and Councilwoman DeForest certainly has that tenure there, what is the, if you could even guess, like the percentage of the staff relationship with the staff of Isa's office, Calvert's office? Like, that's, that's obviously a strong part of this conversation.
It is, but I would say with elected officials and the staff members that work for them, it's always important to leverage the titles of the elected representatives of the city when lobbying. So we do our best to maintain those relationships and certainly do a lot of the work behind the scenes, especially if we get to the point of proposing legislation or asking for very, you know, specific letters of support and other things. But the bigger asks and the job of managing the relationships is best left to, from elected official to elected official, and then staff kind of representing those interests, if you will.
Okay.
I, I could piggyback on that just a little bit. I think staff is phenomenal. Staff gives us a lot of good information or literature to give out. I know when Councilmember Stone and I went, they were instrumental in making sure that we had a lot of information to give. Really, they don't have much interaction with the electeds. They, they do answer questions that we can't, of course, because they're much more knowledgeable and in the weeds, and we're looking at it from 30,000-foot, so.
Okay. Any, any other further discussion? Well, now we need to provide direct clarity in a clarified motion, so.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we continue to have it split, and if it goes in, we don't even know who the mayor will be right now. So I would say that we could leave it as it stands, moving forward until we will have a mayor next meeting. So I would say that the mayor and, would represent both sides of state and federal, or state and, yeah, state and federal, and that, because this is the second year that I've been on this committee, and I have only been to Washington, D.C. once, because of either government shutdowns or just inability to go. And I know, John, you were on that committee with me when we were supposed to go to Washington, D.C., and we didn't get to go because of scheduling, and we couldn't get meetings. So I actually went and met with Congressman Isa myself. So I do think that the groundwork has been done so far for this meeting, especially in January.
Okay.
So that was not a good motion, was it?
I'm not sure what that motion was. So can I amend your motion? Do I need a second before that, or can I amend it?
You have to have a second.
It wasn't finished yet.
It wasn't finished, was it?
No, it wasn't finished.
Okay, so do you know?
So I make a motion that we leave it as it stands until January 20th, or the next meeting in January, the second meeting in January, and...
You can't. You won't be able to, they've got any plans now.
No, that's what I mean. We leave it as it stands with how it is.
Oh, okay. Until the January?
Until the January meeting.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
So we could make arrangements and go.
So you're, so her, I'm going to reiterate your motion, see if I did it right. Your motion is to keep it as it is with the current mayor and you as a committee member to go to D.C., I mean, go to D.C. in January, and then in January revisit the whole subject in January in our meeting specific. Is that what you're asking?
That's what I, that's my motion.
Is that? Is it? Okay, so I have a first. Do I have a second?
I'll make a motion. There we go. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, just for, together. Okay, now, do we have any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, so the second meeting in January is our first meeting in January.
Right, exactly.
Right, that's correct.
And so at that time, we're going to revisit this all again.
Right. And by then, the trip should have already taken place.
Or the government will shut down.
Or the government will be shut down.
The government will be shut down again. Let's hope not. There's enough chaos the first time. And so this is basically a 30-day, 30-day question.
Correct.
A 30-day question.
Have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to notifications.
The City Council shall be notified of review and approval of final map application for parcel map 38568, TPM 38568. An application was filed by Jefferson L.A.-A LLC, a Delaware limited liability company for tentative parcel map number 38568 to subdivide 31.694 acres for residential use, including 852 multifamily units. Engineering staff has completed a review of final parcel map PM 38568, which conforms to the conditions of approval and the tentative parcel map.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, is there any reconsiderations?
Any council member who voted on the prevailing side of the original motion may move a reconsideration to consider new information or correct inadvertent errors on a non-public hearing item at the same or the next meeting. At this time, are there any requests from the City Council for reconsideration?
Seeing none. Is there any? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, future agenda items?
Now is the time for council member requests to add or withdraw items to future agendas. There will be no discussion on the requests. A brief explanation of the request may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Are there any City Council requests?
I see. I see. Okay, I've got, Lisa, I have DeForest in the queue, so I have heard from, so, so we're going to go, okay, so I have DeForest, are you?
Yeah, I'm still there. I don't know, I'm disappearing.
It's coming and going. All right, so we'll go, there we go. Now I have it. Okay, so Dr. DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to put in, to get some information and move it forward for Chronic Nuisance Act, the 1850 that Hemet has. I know I had a business in Hemet, and right next door, we utilized the Chronic Nuisance Act to help PD. There was a call every day there. So it was very, very effective, and I believe that to help our community and citizens experiencing problems, giving our PD a little extra help with that act would be.
Do we have consensus to bring that back?
That was the one I was going to suggest.
That was you too? Okay. Was that what you were going to do?
That and another one.
Oh, okay. So then I'm going to, so we're withdrawing yours, so that is a yes? Did you get that consensus? Okay.
Yeah.
And then we're going to move on to Councilmember Stone.
I, I'm going to task you again, I want to talk about traffic. Thank you.
Okay.
So if I could, good opportunity to follow up that in visiting with our team, I think we're going to have information on the Los Alamos signalization, synchronization probably in February. So second meeting in December is spoken for. We only have one meeting in January. So if that's not too long, we'll bring it back with that context, and that will give an opportunity to talk about anything else traffic-related, but we'll also give you information on that pilot program.
That work? Perfect. Okay. I think we did it. Okay. At this time, there's no further business. We are now adjourned. Have a nice evening.